Hope for a chat. Hope for a rough one.
Here.
Mayor, you have a forum.
Thank you very much. We have two proclamations tonight, or just one. Okay, so we have one. And that is our Eagle Scout, Alexander Dumas. How you doing? What I'll do is I'm gonna read just a little bit about your project, because it's an impressive one, and I was actually there the day that you, we had unveiled it over there at the American Legion, so that was... It looks great. I think some of us wondered why it was gone. We didn't realize what was happening, so I'm glad it came back and it's in great condition. So let me read a little bit about this. Alex restored the 1943 WWII US Navy deck gun located at the American Legion post 68, 154 quarters pass in Berlin. His project was motivated by his respect for veterans and for his two grandfathers, who both served in the armed forces. Alex spent nearly a year renovating the three-inch, 50-caliber deck gun that has been proudly displayed outside the American Legion since the 1950s. The project also involved landscaping the grounds, power washing the building, and installing a walkway from the flagpoles to the deck gun. To accomplish this mammoth task, Alex received donations and resources from the Salcon-Nelcon Towing Corporation for the transportation of the deck gun, Ted Anderson of Superior Refinishing, who Sam blasted and painted the deck gun, Roger Height of West Springfield Auto Parts, who donated the paint, Bill Villiani for his labor installing the walkway, Troop 44 for the many service hours, and I'm sure they all put in, and John Beach for his guidance throughout the entire project. The project totaled just under 400 man-hours. This beautifully restored historic symbol is a testament to the courage and sacrifice of so many who served this great nation and will continue to remind all of us of the freedom we enjoy today for many generations to come. So, quite a project. And we'll step up to the podium and we'll give you your proclamation. See you again. Good. So I'll read your proclamation here. Town of Berlin, Town Council proclamation be hereby known to all that the town of Berlin hereby recognizes Alexander Paul Dumas on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, Boy Scouts of America. In recognition of his commitment to his family, community, and the principles of Eagle scouting, the Town Council congratulates Alexander and extends best wishes to him and all of his future endeavors dated this 10th day of June 2017, it's not today, of course, right, June 2017, at Berlin, Connecticut, Mark Kozinski, Mayor. Hey, congratulations. It's a great project. It's wonderful. You grab a picture of it there. You good? Great job. Thank you very much. A great addition to our community. And good luck in your future endeavors. Okay. Next is our Audience of Citizens. So, yeah, you guys are welcome to stay, leave. Again, you can go. You can go. It's okay. We get it. I wouldn't want to stay either if I know. Appreciate it. Good luck. We have our Audience of Citizens. So if we have anyone that wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Bob Zipadelli, Six Shills Road, Kensington, Connecticut. I'll read what I have to say, because it'll be quicker instead of ad-libbing it. It won't take that long. I'm here tonight to tell you about someone I'm looking to honor for his long service as a volunteer in our community. His name is Robert B. Dornfree, Sr. What made me decide to do something about this was I was driving down Messorio Drive, past the VFW about a month ago. I looked over and I saw Mr. Dornfree mowing the lawn on their sit-down mower as he has done for years. This time was different. You see, Bob has ALS, Lou Gehrig's disease. He could no longer speak or eat like you and I. This brought tears to my eyes. All I could say to myself was, how could this, how could this man still be out there doing his volunteer work with all he is going through? That's when I first called our mayor, Mike, Mark, and told him the story about the man and what I planned to do. I told him about his background, which I will share with you. The mayor was very, very touched. Bob was born in Berlin, grew up on a farm, graduated from Berlin High School in 1949. He joined the Army and fought during the Korean War. He was awarded the Bronze Star. When he got back home, he learned the trade of carpentry with the Padelli family. Over the years, Bob joined many civic and social clubs in Berlin. He was always first to volunteer, using his skills as a carpenter. The organizations he was part of were, the Lions Club was, of which he was a past president, he was a Melvin Jones recipient. Melvin Jones is the founder of the Lions Club. The award is the highest award in lionism. It is recognition of humanitarian work. That was quite an honor there for Bob. The Berlin VFW, he's a charter member, a past commander, and a building commission member. The Italian Club of Berlin, which is another organization that he belongs to, Bob was Man of the Year recipient. He spent many volunteer hours over the years helping with his skills. At the Hospital of Central Connecticut, Bob was a Volunteer of the Year recipient. He spent 20 years volunteering his time every Thursday at 5:00 AM in the morning. He's also a member of the Polish Club for many years. He's a Berlin Little League sponsor and a volunteer and a supporter of all the youth baseball for many years. His plaque may read as follows. The Robert B. Dornfree, Sr. Lifetime Volunteerism Award. Dedicated to a lifetime of community volunteerism, civic duty, and extraordinary service given unselfishly to the residents of the town of Berlin. In closing, it is my hope that the council will allow us to honor Mr. Dornfree with his plaque in the Town Hall Rotunda. It would be great to have any town leaders, past and present, be part of his dedication ceremony. By the way, each year, someone would be recognized with an award in Bob's name and inscribed on the plaque. His condition is perilous as it stands, and so we don't know how much longer Bob will be with us with this terrible, terrible disease. So it's something that we want to proceed on rather soon. I know the council has no August meeting, and you don't get back, I know you have one on the 25th of July, but I'll be on vacation, but, and then you don't come back until September 5th, so... So that's it. I just hope that you'll consider allowing us to use the rotunda. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, I mean, obviously, the Town Hall is open for that, you know? We'd be happy to host that ceremony, and I know you're working on it. You know, I know we don't have any meetings in August, but, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be on a meeting night, but, I mean, whatever you come up with, Bob, just check with, you know, Mr. Healy will figure out the best time, you know, to have the best turnout for him.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, I hope you can get it together.
I really appreciate it.
And I hope he continues to do as best as he can.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Audience, we're still in the Audience of Citizens. Anyone else wishes to speak? Now is your last chance. Once, twice, three times. All right, you're out. Wait for the next Audience of Citizens. All right, on to our meeting agenda. We have a consent agenda tonight. And everybody read the consent agenda?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to pull out number three and move that to 1A in the new business for a topic of discussion.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Okay, so three will be out as 1A, and the rest of the consent agenda, we have looked over and have any other, we have no other questions? Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Okay. I would like to make a motion to accept consent. Agenda items 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6 as written.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. So we'll move on to new business now, and we'll go ahead and, you know, we'll call it 1A, or maybe A, whatever we're calling it. So item 3 in the consent agenda, or 1A. You want to make a, want to make a motion, and we'll discuss it.
Okay. Make sure I have the right one. Move to call a town meeting on July 25th, 2017, for the purpose of voting to approve a non-budgeted appropriation of outside police services in the amount of $38,522 and appropriate to the extra-duty police officer expenditure account.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
Discussion? Questions?
So Mayor, maybe we're gonna have either the Town Manager or the Finance Director. I believe there's an offsetting revenue amount, and it's just acknowledging that we need to go to a town meeting to recognize that. It's that way there's more work going on in town than we anticipated, and we collected as much as we foot out.
That's absolutely right. There is, the revenue and expenditures are offsetting. The town meeting is necessary because we've exceeded $250,000 in transfers during the year. You'll recall back during the budget process, we had a large item. It's not that we've had an excessive number of items relative to the past. We just had a large item, and that put us over, and per charter, we have to go to a town meeting to have that approved.
Okay. Any other questions?
Makes sense to me.
Good day?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. All right, new business, number one.
Agenda item number one. We're requesting an open field in the Berlin Tech Memorial Library. We're requesting approval for a purchase order for a list of library materials that is not indicated. The library belongs to the Connecticut Library Consortium, and it has over 800 members. Because of the number, they have quite a leverage power as far as negotiating cuts on the, to get discounts on the materials that are in the library at the least of the manual request. Helen is here to discuss the many questions to handle.
Okay. Let's make a motion on this.
Okay. Move to approve purchases, purchase orders for the following vendors due to the library's participation in Connecticut Library Consortium and the Library Connection, Inc. As the best discounts have already been provided, this is in the best interest of the town. We have supplies books to Baker &amp; Taylor Company for adult books of $40,000. Books from Baker &amp; Taylor Company for children's and teen books for $21,000. Audio books, DVDs from Midwest Tape for children's and adult DVDs, $6,700. Streaming services of books and music and movies from Midwest, paid through LCI, $4,800. Print magazines from Revisitus, $3,400. Supplies, data services, Library Connection, Inc., $37,000. Downloadable eBooks, audio books, and streaming video from Overdrive for $7,200. Network maintenance, Connecticut Center for Advanced Technology, $10,752. Equipment books, audiovisual materials, and program materials from Amazon for $5,000. Large print books, Cengage Learning, $6,000. eBooks, e-magazines, and audiovisual materials, recorded books, $4,400. Dues, workshops, licensing, databases, Connecticut Library Consortium for $3,000. And finally, maintenance supplies from Demco, $3,500.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Any of you all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Agenda item number two is to request a public hearing concerning the order appropriating $98,000 for the reconstruction of the field during the budget process. We'll discuss that the field people have, the new infield, done. This includes drainage, soil, the topsoil, playing infield, pitching them out. It would be completely renovated to meet up with current standards. And a lot of the kids, I believe, I understand, that periodically are stolen because of the looks and things, we have an unusual bounce in the ball, and the kids may get hurt, so it's time to do this and assist funding of the project.
Okay. Motion on this?
All right. Move to authorize the interim Town Manager to retain the services of Joseph Fazi LLC to prepare bond authorization documents for executing contracts, purchase, installation, and other related costs for the reconstruction of Zipadelli Field, and to authorize the interim Town Manager to schedule and advertise for Tuesday, July 25th, 2017, at 7:00 PM, to hold a public hearing on an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Appropriating $98,000 for the reconstruction of Zipadelli Field and authorizing the issue of $98,000 of bonds to the town to meet said appropriation, and pending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purposes.
Second on this?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? I do have one question. I know we talked about this in the budget process, Kevin, but I thought we talked about $70,000. How did we get to 98? I'm pretty, I, we looked back, I think I looked back at some notes, and I thought we were at 70.
We were in the budget process. This includes, one, they went out to bid, and the bid came in a little bit higher at $84,000, and a little bit over $84,000. And then there are issuance costs and contingency. So, the initial intent was $70,000, paid for with general fund proceeds. If you'll recall, in the last meeting, we talked about the, the security vestibules and reusing money that had been borrowed several years ago and was sitting essentially on the sidelines. This is the remaining balance of that will be used for this. So, we have $98,000 here, but there will not be additional new borrowing to do this. We'll be repurposing borrowing that we haven't actually spent since 2011, and there's some IRS reporting requirements as a result of that, and just better use of the town's money.
So it's no, it's not new borrowing?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Yes?
I need to point out, because of the timing of this and the timing of doing the project, you only have the one meeting in July, we'll need to have the council also approve the project at the next meeting. I know that in the past, we tried not to do that, or we're requesting the council consider this so that we can do the project then, or during reconstruction, seeing a lot of policies.
Okay. I think we can handle that. Get it done for the, for the field there. Don't want to have a subpar field for our baseball players. Not a good thing. Okay. So any other questions? Yes, sir.
Mayor, there wasn't the evaluation of the bids in the packet. Could we have that for our next meeting? That would be, that would be real helpful. And I understand there may, I just would like to see what was done in that process. Sounds like we have an answer to that right now.
There was only one company who decided to bid on the project. So we can bring you his notes the next meeting on the 25th.
Yeah, and if you could indicate if there was others, you know, sometimes bid packages are taken out if we just have any other information we know on those that may have had interest in who decided. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
I do already have a summary item. Would it help you if I forward that to you tomorrow?
Yes.
Because of the...
Yeah. And, you know...
Yeah, it would be the only item, but at least you have the summary, and if you have additional questions, you have time to put it together.
Yeah. And, you know, we'll have a little time to publicize that. You know, I think the weekly paper in town would get that out potentially by the next Thursday, so it's, there'll be some publicity, so folks could come and support it on that following Tuesday.
Okay. Great. Good. Yes.
Just a point of interest for me. This is money we already borrowed, and we're gonna repurpose it, but we still have to pay again to reissue to borrow the money?
Probably some fees, I'm guessing, right?
There are. We will have to do an official ordinance to reallocate the money, so it will be substantially less than if we were to go to the market and borrow, but there is, there are some modest bond council costs. And bond council will be here at the next meeting to talk about this, this item, so...
And if there's anything we can do, a breakout before that time, then there'll be no questions for me if I can get all that info ahead of time. That'd be great.
Okay. Great. Nothing else? Motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Number three.
Agenda item number four. I was about a year and a half ago, the council approved a project, an energy conservation project, which resulted in putting in boiler, there for many, putting in solar panels on many buildings in town. The original public hearing was a couple of $9 million performance of base lease, of the Resco. The base contract was $8.7 million. We're coming to the end of that project. We're reviewing some of the final movement of the project. Some things have been deleted, some things have been added. We've come down to the point where we have this final change order, which would result in some credits, and also that the Facilities Department's identified some additional energy-saving measures that they would like to implement. The council also approved in the budget, realized here $50,000 in the facilities budget, which allowed us to, in case of unforeseen situation that came up during the project. So this is like, there's two, there's two agendas here. First one, we require, a requesting that the council authorize Town Management increase the contract up to $9 million, including the change order. And then the follow-up, the second one, identifying the changes that we have.
Okay.
Doug, follow this here, Facilities Department, to discuss what we're doing.
Okay. Do the motion, then we can...
Absolutely. Move to authorize the interim Town Manager, Jack Haley, to increase the Resco contract up to eight million, or nine million, sorry, as needed to cover any change orders.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Questions?
Yeah, I just have a question on just identifying what those additional items are. Since additional energy conservation measures have been identified, just curious what those are. I think I was in the, in the change order, but I could be wrong.
Right. During, excuse me, the initial design and the audit, we had a lot of à la carte items we were able to do or not do. This being one of them, where we could remove the air compressor from the Town Hall building, which does some pneumatic temperature controls, uses a lot of energy. There's a, there's a few components that are still being controlled by that. So now that we're at the end of the project, we have an opportunity to remove that system, put the remaining components on, on the energy management system, DDC controls that we can view from our computer, and pick up a few more points for energy conservation. So it's less of a maintenance item. We can eliminate the need for the maintenance on the compressor and gain some more control of the equipment in the building.
We also want to communicate back, it would not just be internal communication here. This goes back to the central communication, the energy control system at the Facilities Department. He can pick that up on his computer and move.
So we don't have to get a text from you saying there's a problem with the air conditioning in Town Hall?
And another part of that is, the pneumatic systems are very old, and they're antiquated, you know, most, most places are, we're getting away from the pneumatic controls, going to DDC. This would, this is sort of like the last, a nice connection for this building. It would do with a last piece of pneumatic controls. And the air compressor, you're running an air compressor for a couple controls, and that's just nutrition.
Okay. Okay. Questions? No? Okay. Motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Next.
As you just described, this is, this, the next, agenda item number four, is a request to use that money, the money that we have, set aside in our budgets, $50,000, to pay for, help pay for that, that change order to the new system and to move the pressure. This is the request to that.
Okay. Motion on this?
Motion to approve the transfer of $50,000 of fiscal year 2018, unassigned general fund balance to the contractual services account in the Public Buildings Department for the purpose of completing additional energy-saving measures in several town buildings.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So moved. Thanks. Thanks, Doug. Before.
Agenda item number five, approve the transfer of $32,400 to cover additional Town Manager costs in February, this is the request.
Okay. Motion on this?
Move to transfer $32,829 from the Pension Account in the Town Manager and Revenue Collector Departments to the Department Head Account in the Town Manager Department to cover higher than budgeted expenditures.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Questions? Hearing, no questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So moved.
Transfer.
Six.
As you know, the Revenue Collector officials are vacant. We are looking to fill that, but the interim, we have, we are paying a part-time person in the office. We've incurred additional costs of $15,000, $40,000. So requesting a transfer to cover the additional costs.
Okay. Motion on this?
Move to transfer $15,640 from the Mid Manager Account in the Revenue Collector Department to Clerical Personnel Account in the Revenue Collector Department to cover higher than expected budgeted expenditures.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any questions?
Just a quick question.
Yep.
The, the net on that is actually lower, or is that in the sense that we didn't expend as much on the tax collector, and then we needed to move over to clerical? What was the net on that?
The net was a savings of about $1,000. We just, we needed hands.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So moved. Seven.
Agenda item number seven.
Lucky number seven.
Yeah. Transfer $35,484 to the electricity cost in the school. I feel that you, in the last couple of years, you owe money and responsibility for covering the costs of the department. And the last year, just, we've had, during the process, we've incurred additional electrical costs. Next year, we should see, because it's a guaranteed reduction, and the Resco's department will decrease, but this year, we need additional funding to cover some of the increased electrical costs that we incurred earlier.
Okay. Motion?
Move to transfer $35,484 from the Electricity Account in the Public Buildings Department to the Electricity Account in the Schools Department to cover higher than budgeted expenditures.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Questions?
Just a quick question. Was that accounted for, was that any rationale around it, in that there may have been additional work being done at a certain time that caused more electricity to be used? Timing of things, I'm not sure what drove it. So that'd be helpful to know.
As, as you know, 61, Electric Account 61 was moved over to 38 this year. Also, the phasing of the high school, what the Board of Ed had budgeted in the past was a little before the phasing of the high school was complete. So we're, we're still learning the building, what the demand is, what it's gonna truly cost the town to operate now that it's complete. cost the town to operate now that it's complete. So there was a little overlap on, on that end, and a lot of that extra cost came as a result of the high school. We have seen a reduction in usage since the Naresco project compared to where we were last year as far as kilowatts and, and costs. So we are seeing a savings with the project, but it was, it was an overlap of the high school completion and then transferring from, from town to Board of Ed. So I think we'll have a better handle on it next year, and we're tracking it pretty closely.
So a combination of the budget estimate from the Board of Ed before it was transferred to us and the transition cost with the new high school putting in place?
Right. The, the building is using energy more efficient, but it's also using more for the use of it and the new equipment, so there's a little bit of a trade-off.
Understood.
And we have, you have to, we're actively seeing any of the energy, any of the energy generated by the solar panels, that's not the reflected in those.
They, they just started producing, two of the schools in June, and Willard and Grizzle just came on. I'm sorry. McGee, McGee and Willard just came online beginning of July, so we're, we're starting to, to pay off, pay back with the solar.
Oh, okay. So we'll see some savings from that?
Those are guaranteed, that's guaranteed savings from the rest of, so they have to do evaluation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was a larger space. I mean, we, like, like I said, I, my understanding, I believe, was just a combination of not estimating as much electricity at that time as well as a larger space.
Yeah.
You're cooling more air, you're handling more, more area, so. Good timing to get the efficiencies in place and solar in place. I think it's working out well.
Okay. Thanks, Doug. Hearing nothing further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Pose? So moved. Thank you.
Item number eight, we're requesting a transfer of unassigned fund balance to catch basin cleaning. We have several catch basins, a lot of catch basins in town that require cleaning, park stormwater plan. Each year we try to do those. The cleaning was enacted by the end of fiscal year, it's already over. Part of that was because of, I insisted on going out for a kick and delayed it from the start. And so it's been over to the next year, we're requesting a balanced transfer to cover that cost.
Okay. Motion on this?
Move to approve the transfer of $40,000 of the fiscal year 2018 unassigned general fund balance to the catch basin cleaning account in the highway department.
Second on this?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Pose? So moved.
Item number nine, just continuing our discussion about adopting town policies, we're definitely in the capital fund balance. Just after you've seen that's pretty bad.
We have a motion on this?
Okay. Move to adopt the debt, capital, and fund balance policies.
Well, that's one of the shortest motions ever. Very efficient. Second on that?
Yes, uh, second on that.
Discussion? I mean, I just want to lead it off by saying, you know, thank Mr. Healy, Mr. Delaney. I can come up, Mr. Delaney. Maybe we have some questions, but I know you're pretty, you know, we have, have had a couple meetings to digest it and look at it, and we certainly understand the purpose of it. We have to update this. It hasn't been updated right since 2000.
Correct.
We understand the financial markets, you know, kind of want to see this. It's good town fiscal management, and I know we've set some goals in here, which although I understand, as we have heard from you, the goals are lofty, or a little bit loftier than what we're at, at the moment, but we understand that as we pay down, in particular, right, the debt on the high school will be, should be close to or below these, within the range of these goals, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. And obviously, I know we, I read this over pretty thoroughly the other day, and as I read a couple of those paragraphs, that, you know, we, it's a goal. And we understand there may be emergencies, like state budgets and, and other things that, that may occur.
That's true.
Upcoming year and, and into next year and probably the year after, and perhaps many years after that, but we, so we can, I mean, we obviously, and the policy gives us the latitude to do what we have to do for the town.
Correct.
Although it does give us at least some pretty good direction for the council and the new incoming Board of Finance, right?
Correct. And it's, it's based on GFOA best practices and adopting parts from other communities that are AAA rated, and so it's intended to, to drive us in the direction of trying to seize on the lowest possible borrowing costs in those times when we will borrow, maintain a fund balance so that we can provide tax stability for the community while still making critical investments.
Great. Anything else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just appreciate Mr. Delaney's work on that, and, and I did see there was an update to the words with respect to the target debt level, and I did, did appreciate, and I reread the explanation of the plan, if we're above or not meeting those levels. And I feel very comfortable in that, and I think that, that gives some action associated with it. It's, it's not a penalty or requirement, but it's, it, it makes a signed action, which I think is very good, and with the coordination with the finance committee coming up and with Mr. Delaney and/or the town manager, I think it's an excellent document, and I'm comfortable with moving forward with that.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks a lot, and good, good fiscal management. We appreciate all the help. We need all the help we can get. So, motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Pose? So moved.
Item number ten, business continuity assessment. Your, the audit has recommended that the managed productive formal assessment determine how long we can go without, without our functioning servers. Also, we should assess how much data we can safely lose without there being a significant financial operation or any much impact. So we're requesting approval to award a contract with Bloom Shapiro to conduct a business continuity assessment.
Okay. Motion on this?
Move to award the contract for our business continuity assessment to the low bidder, Bloom Shapiro, in the amount of $24,500 plus a 20% contingency for an amount not to exceed $29,400.
Second on this?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Yeah? Yeah?
The thing I noted was, one bid came in at like $370,000.
Yeah, that was odd.
And, you know, a couple were over $100,000.
See, the bid that came in over that is, is a software. And I guess if you, my understanding, this kind of term of discussion, that Sun Guard is a specialized software and really used for major corporations. So like, you know, if, if it was something where maybe the state could manage it, or you know, somebody, but it has to be like a lot of employees. It really is not suitable for a small town like us.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's...
We did the interview, we got very close with Bloom Shapiro. They, they came in the mail, and they, they gave us a very good presentation. And had already anticipated our questions. It was interesting as we talked to them, as we started to ask a question, looking at them, saying, well, you have it, so I guess, so they anticipated what we wanted.
And I just want to make sure that cloud complete is fully a hive one, but they were using the Sun Guard. So you see, there's Sun Guard in here.
So they marked it up.
One side Sun Guard and one just clouding.
No markup, quite a markup on the Sun Guard from the other company, yeah. What a deal. Okay. Good.
Quick question, Kate. You've been working on this for a few years now, right? I'm just trying to help people out with a little background, so.
Yeah. A number of years ago, we had done the individual... A number of years ago, I had come in front of you and asked that we do a business continuity plan. And at that point, every department in town hall had to work with the company that we selected, and we have business continuity plans. Those are, those are being updated again. And so it's, one of the things that you challenged me at that time was to make sure it didn't sit on the shelf. So through the years, as we have done different things, we're trying to make sure that it doesn't sit on a shelf.
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No comments? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Pose? So moved. Eleven?
This is from the Public Works Department. We're asking, requesting that the refuse and recycling, collecting contract, requesting an extension. Trash away contract has offered us a, and if we would extend the contract, a reduction in the cost of, of the contract. They, they proposed a reduction of the current unit cost from $3.15 to $2.46 for the recyclables. And then holding the line on, and not, not incurring the cost of living adjustment for this year for all, for both, both of the services. And then going forward, you know, we would maintain that, that cost for the recycle, and then start re-incurring the cost of living for the next two years. Based on the calculations, I just noticed on the back, there was a, there was a cost rating that somebody had a couple of typos in. And it should not read $3.15 per month, it should read $3.15. The projected savings should be a dollar five per month on $1.50. But the summary is correct. The first year savings would be $107,552. As I calculated, the saving for the second two years would be approximately $88,000 per year. So over the course of the contract, it would be a saving of $283,000. This extension allows the trash away, they're already, they're making investments in their capital, so it helps them plan for the future. It helps the town in the future, especially the city contract. I asked the Public Works Department to go out and look at other rates in, for other towns in the area. It's sort of a, it's not consistent in how you bid, just towns did it several different ways. But where we could get a similar cost of service, the only town that I found that had a overall cost per unit that's in this, 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 all our survey results was Warren, Connecticut. Now Warren's got, you know, it's up by me, and there's not a lot, there's not a lot of people there. But their cost was about $0.50 per unit lower. Other than that, you know, if we compare it to Burlington or Wilkit, some of the other towns, we're, we're comparable or below those costs. I'm comfortable in, in recommending to you that for particular budgets, seasonality, it would be good for us to take advantage of the cost savings and to extend the contract. So I'm requesting an approval on it.
Okay. Motion on this?
Okay. Move to authorize the interim town manager, subject to the Corporation Council review, to enter into agreement to extend, extend both contract 2009-10, collection of recyclables, and contract 2011, collection of refuse with Trash Away Inc. of New Britain, Connecticut through June 30th, 2020.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Just so, and just overall with Trash Away, I assume we're happy with them, obviously?
Overall, we're happy with them. We've had good service.
Lot of complaint? We had a lot of complaints?
The only, the only time we really get any complaint from them was...
Yeah.
Typically, no. Overall, they're, they're, they're very responsive. Occasionally, we get something, they'll miss, they'll miss a container or something like that. But overall, no, they're, they're very responsive. So today, we had a resident call and said that there was some trash on Farmington Avenue, some TV sets and some other stuff. Public Works contact, Trash Away, the TV sets are gone, and the other, we chose to remove by tomorrow morning.
Some TV sets on Norton Road, too, I noticed. Been sitting there for a long time. I don't know if the people, you know, the house just sold. I wonder if people just left and... They were there the other day. I don't know what, what happened to them. Speaking of TV sets, they seem to be sitting out there. Okay, so yeah, everybody's, so we're pretty happy with them.
I believe...
Yeah. Okay. Yes?
Just a question on, and I forget where we're at in the sense of paying off the purchase of the cans themselves, or the carts? If we've, we've reached that and if we've done that step decrease in the cost associated with those? I don't know if we have any...
Yeah, I'm not sure. The department's evaluation, we didn't look at that. I believe we're getting to the end of that, but I don't want to, I can, if you, I can do that, but I agree with you.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to know where we're at on that. And, you know, it's, was there any look also back at when we bid it last time? What the market is, you know, the bidders that were there, or the market for, or bidders? I mean, there's challenges sometimes. I think I wouldn't say trash collection is, is like a utility where you have only one really service provider, but it is fair, fairly territorial, I think, to some degree.
It is fairly territorial, and that's why I asked them for analysis of similar towns in the area. I thought that was a way to do cost comparisons. And overall, it is territorial, like you said. And it's not everybody bids it the same. The town of Earl, what we're doing is where it's 100% of the town. Other towns do where the town pays the tipping fee, the residents pay for the actual pickup of, of the material. So that, that's a different way of bidding, yet one thing that's, you know, one thing I think we keep playing into this is the, the market for recyclables is down. At one time, three or four years ago, you could bid recyclables, you'd get $20, $25 per ton, reimburse, rebate. Right now, you're not getting that anymore. You know, I think the last time I negotiated, a year and a half ago, it was $10 a ton. I believe it's down from that also. They, they do do a good job in that, in building a single stream recycling. Right now, that is the way to go, and that's improving the amount of recyclables. Again, you know, at one time, you had your little container you put out there, now you have the big container. And really, what we should be doing is trying to educate our public to move more of our, of the trash to that recycling container. Because figure, every, every time you do that, you save $60 a ton. If you move one ton, you save $60 per ton on disposal. So every time we can move a ton of garbage from one to the other, you're saving between $16 and $17 a ton, $16 and $17 a ton.
So it sounds like a marketing approach that we've talked many times with the golf course, that there may be a return on that investment to advise our residents of that transition. Something to look at, and something to look at in their strategy going forward, especially with, when the payment of the cans goes out, too, so. Yeah, I, I don't know if you had any other data points to say, hey, you know, everyone else's costs are going down, or if there's any other driving factors, but, I mean, $283,000 over two years, that, that's helpful. There's always the question is, could it be more? And that's, we don't really know unless we were to bid it, so.
I've bid it for the last few years. Not, it has not been going down. The cost of disposal has been going up. Again, the recycling's going down, the cost of disposal's going up. There's been, there's been a change. Now, we go to Bristol, Bristol, the press is, but the nearest plant in Hartford, they've changed their management there, and their cost structure, such that it's stabilized, but it's still going up slightly. You know, it goes maybe a dollar a ton, but it's still going up, so. Stay status quo, go down a little bit. I believe it's, that's also the cost of energy for fuel, the trucks, you know, that's been stabilized over the last few years. I think there's a little, talking to Jim Simon, there's a little pressure right now to increase diesel cost, so I think, you know, that's one thing we need to be focusing on.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Pose? So moved. Thank you. Twelve?
Number twelve. A favor bridge.
A big dig.
Quite the bridge.
Quite the bridge. The request, what we're requesting here is, I brought up our management force, there's been a delay on the bridge primarily due to some contamination, solar conditions at the bridge. What we're requesting here is that the cost of disposal, so the adding cost of the bridge, we're requesting that the council decrease the value of the contract not to exceed an amount of $3 million, understanding that we are, our part of that is 10%. We only take 10%. Currently, I believe, the cap's at about 2.5, $2,883,000. Right now, based on the latest estimates from the contract, we're at $2,881,000, $840,000. We're requesting going to $3 million. Again, 9% of this is paid for by federal and state funds. We pay the 10%. In talking with the contractor for the release schedule, it should be done in September.
So, the whole cost of the bridge, we're only paying?
10%.
10%? Okay. And it's over, we think it's over by September?
Well, they actually runs the liquidate damages before that.
Oh, yeah.
So, their schedule shows in September. Our schedule says it's supposed to be done by end of July in between the liquidate damages.
Oh, all right, okay. They should be in a rush. Yeah, that's how, I hope they are. Yeah, right, exactly. All right, motion on this?
Sure. Move to authorize the interim Town Manager to increase the value of Contract 2016-18 with Mastro Battisto of Bristol, Connecticut, through change orders to an amount not to exceed $3 million.
Second?
Second.
Questions?
Yeah, just a question on, it appears to be about another $50,000 and I'm just curious if that's about the right amount. And I didn't see a, the funds available report that we typically see. Mr. Delaney has any information or insight on that, where we're at, if we're going to be running out in that account or...
We won't be. This bridge is being funded through a bonded, it's through a bonded account and we don't do sufficiency of funds for bonded accounts. It's very, it's typical that we would actually move forward with the project before we've gone out to bond. Sometimes, as in the case of the Hubbard Roof, we actually complete the project before we've gone out to bond. So, that's why there's no sufficiency.
Thank you.
Okay, good, good. Okay, any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Okay, so, now we to our appointments. I see we have one appointment, Kate, right? So, that's, and that would be for the Conservation Commission alternate spot? Number four, okay. Take nominations on this?
Okay, I'll nominate Lisa Pagliaro for the Conservation Commission alternate.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Ms. Pagliaro?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Congratulations to Ms. Pagliaro to be on our Conservation Commission. We appreciate the help through all our commissions. Okay, where we at now? Town Managers' Report.
Just wanted to make sure you're aware, but sidewalk property has begun on the road. Bridges and trees, and trees are being moved. So, we're starting, we're beginning that project. Should be looking at that through this fall. There'll be Kensington Road, Campbell Bank, Forrod and Burn Street, those are the areas that we're working on right now. We also had discussion this morning between Jim Horrible, myself, and Jim Mahoney, looking at a lot of grants. If you remember, the additional sidewalks are part of this design that we'd like to be able to do for some additional areas in town to continue connecting different parts of town to Kensington Building. And so, we're planning to apply a few more grants, additional sidewalks. The paving has started. Ryan's been out, he's done quite a bit of paving already this year currently. They're working Friar Patch Partridge and Rapid Trail. And based on our meeting on Monday, Fairview Drive and Pritchard Lane are the next roads to be paved this summer. We held a, I, we called a management meeting of our staff on the 29th. We held it at the library. Kevin Roy came in, continued the room, gave a special personnel policies, a personal performance management. We also had presentations by Kate and by Kevin Delaney on financial policies and account for requirements. The idea was just, there's a lot of moving parts, you know, running the town and there's a lot of new staff. We want to make sure that we're all being consistent. So, we took a few hours, we went over to the library. We actually had a good discussion. It was just a good time for people to ask questions and talk amongst the staff, too. So, we held that on the 29th. Of course, we are working on the contract negotiation that has almost come to an conclusion. So, we'll have to bring that up before we shortly. And also, we've begun up there, we meet either every Friday or the Friday, depending on the need, between John Salvio and Mark Bayram of the Golf Pro. And they haven't done it, of course. We're meeting every week now to discuss the needs, of course, coordinate activities. If you go up there, there's some trees been planted along the T, some different mulching that areas, some mulching on Star Gate, some pavement along the back part of the clubhouse. But this week, they're removing stumps out, of course, there's identification of some stumps that have been removed. They're using, the town contract with the pre-removal company that Brian uses, so we've been doing that. There was a bridge that needed repair, it was closed, that's been repaired. Jerry Salvio's gone out to, there's companies actually specializing bridges on golf courses. We've gone out to talk with them. They gave us some information. There's some bridges that need to be repaired there. And they're taking that to Jim Horrible, who's a lot of us discussed what we need to firm it. So, we're trying to coordinate the activities up there. They also talked with Jim Simon, who worked about getting a scrap metal, of course, come in, take rid of some of the old equipment. So, they're coordinating the activities. There's a little meaning to try to get everybody to work together, get that done.
What's unique to bridges on golf courses? Just out of curiosity, we know? What's unique to bridges on golf courses? Don't know, right? It's a bridge, right?
No, it's a bridge.
Right, yeah. Just wondering.
They are special.
Yeah, they're special, okay.
Golf ball bounces.
Yeah, maybe.
Bounces towards the hole.
I have seen my ball, it's nicely rolled across.
Oh, that's it, yeah.
Tennis courts, the painting of the courts has been done. We are working on finalizing that. Doug Cruz is out there working on, making sure, getting the lights worked, Steve Wood too, and the grounds people are out there, working on, you know, making it nice around there. At this point, they are planning on having a tournament there in August. We had a coordination conference called this call on Friday. At this time, when I say all systems are go, that that will be ready so they can have their tournament there in August.
Great.
Last thing is, I hope they were all positive. Ranger Ray, they've been getting letters from, make it Department of Environmental Protection. We have to have certain permits in place and one of them's in place for, it sounds funny, but sort of larger version permit, to sell water to the Worthington Fire District. And we actually got a letter from them saying that we were quote-unquote violation because they hadn't been filed. And one thing is that the file goes back preceding anybody being here, just working these jobs. But the other part of it is we need Worthington Fire District to sign the paperwork, get those to us. And it's been some correspondence going back and forth. We need to get that paperwork signed. We've talked to our powers. He said he has signed it. We're just waiting for them, for their administrator to get that to us and we'll file that. But we only have two and a half weeks left before that has to be filed. So, we're pushing. I thought the council should just be aware of it. We have received that notice. But we are pushing to get that filed here and get it to you. Ray has been in contact with him. The check is cut. We have to check waiting to pay the fee. So, we're just, we're not going to pay the mortgage.
Great. My favorite question.
Okay. We have, I drafted a letter, I drafted a letter on that, that went to Jennifer. She looked at it. She would make some modifications. Since then, we have done a lot of due diligence on that. The building inspector went out again. The fire marshals went out again. They have updated their reports. Planning is only went out, they're updating their report. There's also, Jennifer made contact with some people in Britain. She has contacted the person owns the, she's contacted people who, the next to the person owns the property, we've got his address and everything. So, reaching out to him. So, we've got a new report, updated report, that is consistent with all of the requirements in our play order. And we've put together much more information. The last two things that we're looking at right now is, there's a code there that has been banned. We're looking at whether or not there's any environmental requirement, any environmental regulations that needs to be included in the report. And also, I'm looking to see whether or not that house sits within the aquifer protection area for the town welfare is in that area. And so, that's all put together.
So, that means that the note, so, we're gonna?
It's gonna be filed.
Notice this guy shortly?
Yes.
Okay, and this, yeah, okay.
And it's consistent, one of the things, when I wrote the letter, there is a, Chuck and Eric listened to much of, you have to follow a very strict procedure which has not been followed before.
Okay.
And so, when I sent my, when I drafted my letter, as much as I tried to follow the procedure, I'm not a lawyer, I'm an engineer. So, it didn't quite come out the way it's, you know, mine is more like, you know, do this or, so we had to soften. So, and, but anyway, it's been, it's drafted. And Jennifer was right, we went out and did every re-inspect so that all of the inspections, oh, we also got the reports from the Health Department and that's been included. So, we have...
A nice full record now.
Yeah, a nice full record.
And, you know, I mean, for the record, it's, what's Elton Road, what's it?
77.
77 Elton Road, you know, very disturbing. It's been there for, the neighbors have been living with this blighted property for many years. And for whatever reason, town, former, you know, I mean, through the years, the town, I think, has dropped the ball on it from where I sit. And the neighbors approached me, you know, last year at the Berlin Fair and they're very upset. So, I appreciate everybody. I know we had to sort of start the process over again and we've done that and it's been a long road. But I, you know, I think the people deserve better from our town and I know we're trying to get that done.
There's a big full package from the law departments.
Yeah, that's great, so...
Department meeting this morning, we're over. This department, then, we've also identified a couple of law problems that I guess we have to...
Oh, okay, good. All right, great. I have one more question for you, but yeah, go ahead.
In the southbound lane of Berlin Turnpike, just before Vidju Plaza, there's, looks like they're dumping stuff. There used to be a trailer there. I'll double check it tomorrow and I'll call you, but, yeah.
Okay. Special committee reports. I know we have, the next meeting will be the Ordinance Committee. I think it's on the 19th, right, at 6 o'clock? Here? Do we know if it's here? Okay. Do we know about that?
I have no question.
Okay. So, I think, I don't know how we arrived at that date, but July 19th, 6 o'clock is the Ordinance Committee. You know, on the agenda, I think, definitely the Golf Commission. We have some continuing discussion on that, see if we can get that established. And I think we finished, Blight, yeah, Blight, we can talk about Blight.
Can you help it, we're gonna have one on there.
What do we?
Make our orders, this is to the state.
I think we finished up by the, well, the leash law, we were, we have to, I think we were gonna add some notices to the parks, right? And were we cleaning up the language in that, I thought?
Minor tweak in that.
Yeah, okay.
I literally did a care directive, kind of pared a couple lines.
Okay. All right, so that'll be on the 19th. So, if Kate, if you... Yeah, we took care of that, yeah. Okay, so we're good for that date? Kate, you can notice that. Anything else? Committees? Any other committees that we're on? I don't think, I don't think there's been any, right, that I have heard of. Okay. Counselor Communications? Peter, anything?
I just have a quick item I want to warn my fellow council members and anybody that might be watching. It's tax bill season. I received a tax bill from the Worthington Fire District, which is interesting because I am, I don't live in the Worthington Fire District and I don't have water or sewer service to my house. So, I just caution people to understand who they owe money to and what fire district they live in before they pay the bill, to double check it.
That's the long arm of the law from the Worthington Fire District to the Chamberlain Highway. That's quite a distance. Yeah, somehow. Sure how that occurs, but...
It's just, I'm sure it's a computer glitch or whatever.
Yeah.
People should be aware where they live and who they owe the money to. Just don't mail the check. That's all I'm asking.
It's always good to figure that out, yeah.
It's a very official-looking document. If I didn't understand the system, I would've paid it.
They're hoping you pay, Charlie, you know? Just a little extra to the Worthington District won't hurt anybody, right? Kick in some extra money, huh? Yeah, but they're trying. They're trying to collect some extra money. Got to give them credit for that, I guess. But, yeah, so people need, some, I certainly have had some questions from people in town, you know, that are relatively new to town, do get confused with the different districts, which is odd for those of us that have been in town for most of our life, too. It's odd, but it's all right. We've learned to, I guess, you know, understand it to some extent. That's, okay, so that's, anything else, guys? We got other comments? We're good? Okay, so we can go to our acceptance of minutes. We've got the June 20th.
Motion to accept the Town Council meeting from June 20th, 2017, the meeting minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. And 29th?
Motion to accept the special Town Council meeting minutes from Thursday, June 29th, 2017.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Obstained.
One abstention, okay. All right, we're all set. Approved. And motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.